Good evening. Welcome to the September 24th, 2019 meeting of the Millis School Committee. I'll start by announcing that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public Schools website under the School Committee section. Jody, do we have anybody signing for open session?
We do not.
All right. I'll start then. Roll call to my left. Carrie?
Here.
Robin?
Here.
My attendant?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Denise?
Here.
Teacher representative?
Yes.
Student representatives?
Yes.
All right. Everybody's here. Before we do anything, we actually would like to, since this is Mr. Phelps's last meeting here with us in the last week here in Millis, we wanted to, one, thank him and also present him with a couple of things. So, we would like to come up.
Most importantly, we have a brick from the Old Clyde Brown.
Oh, that's wonderful.
That states you were principal there from 2011 to 2019. And you can either choose to bring it, take it home and put it on your shelf, or we will find an appropriate place and start a brick commemorative walkway area at the new Clyde Brown.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say also that there, it's been eight years of a wonderful journey. You, Jason, stayed with us through the tough part of opening the school and getting it onboard and up and running and running smoothly, and along with Elise, of course. But it's bittersweet saying goodbye. I wish you well in retirement. Hope you enjoy it. And want to thank you very much for your, everything you've done for the students in Millis and the families. And we have a Millis quilt for you.
Yeah, no, I'd just like to echo Nancy. Thank you very much. It's weird that it's actually been eight years. You will be the only elementary school principal either of my girls had. So, no, thank you very much for all the time you've spent here with us, working through numerous things and obviously capping it off with the building. It's been a pleasure, and we wish you all the best going forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's been a privilege to serve the town of Millis and be part of the small school, big family for these past eight years. It's very bittersweet. It's very bittersweet. But I'm looking forward to seeing awesome and amazing things happen in Millis and keeping the momentum going forward. So, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to serve.
Thank you.
It's been my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget your pride.
You're going to have to update it.
Yeah.
Mark, how long did that take you to knit? Mark's been working at that diligently. Like eight?
Yeah. Eight years in the making.
He started it the first day you got here.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Student representatives, we're going to move you guys up first and held you last time for.
Kids in the Netherlands are here and are coming to school with their host families every day. Tomorrow is a half-day. There's a football game this Saturday, the 21st, at home. The Millis Public Library is looking for volunteers to help with their book sales because include student and members of the community. There is a high school field trip to museum and science for the community and student and parents.
Well, Clyde Brown, as we've heard, on Mr. Phelps' last day is Friday. He's retiring. Lucky person. School is planning an all-school assembly on Friday for students to say goodbye to him during the school day. Joe Russo will be the interim principal, starting on Monday, September 30. The final open house of 2019 CFB will be tomorrow night, Wednesday, September 25th, for grades kindergarten and five. Then on Monday, they will welcome the Spanish counselor assistant, Maria Rodriguez Alonso, who is from the Canary Islands. At Millis School, they held open house last week, all attended. It is, Millis School's beginning the process for student council elections, and the school and community focus on make a difference. They're also starting after-school clubs. This was also banned books week from American Library Association, where we celebrate the freedom to read. And middle school classes came down with their teachers for a banned book party, where they could discuss the different books that had been challenged. In high school, senior college planning and financial aid is Thursday, September 26th, at 6:00 at the Millis Public Library for parents and students. National voter registration day is today. Student council is celebrating all week long with voter registration forms available during both branches. See Mr. Dambuk for more info. And tomorrow is an early release day for everybody. Student council will hold its first school-wide assembly of the year with different people speaking on clubs and such.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to action items. First is approval of our minutes from the September 10 meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gibbs.
I make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from September 10, 2019. Second?
Been moved in seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is consideration to approve out-of-state trip to the Rhode Island Trinity Center.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cala.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for eighth, I'm sorry, the eighth-grade trip to the Trinity Theater in Providence, Rhode Island, on Thursday, 12/19/2019 for a theater production of A Christmas Carol.
Second?
Been moved in seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, consideration to reduce fees to Buddy Bowl on October 2nd, October 12th and 13th.
What do they look, what production are they looking?
In a packet. Two days. So, it looks like the fee excluding custodians would be $901. And they are requesting that the building fees be waived as they've been done in the past. There's an email from Mr. Chip Fagan, who organizes it. Ms. Gibbs.
I make a motion to approve waiving the facility rental fees, but not the custodial fees for the Buddy Bowl for Saturday, October 12th, Sunday, October 13th.
Been moved in seconded.
Second?
Been moved in seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair. That's okay. I think I'm just going to reiterate what I said last meeting. When we talked about fees for other organizations, we seemed to be, again, pretty inconsistent on some. We exclude all fees. Some, we're giving half away, some at 75 percent away, that we really need to sit down and talk about what our policy is or how we're going to handle fees going forward.
So, that's what we're going to do.
To be fair.
Down, that's, down in the agenda, the chairman's report, we have facility fee discussions.
Perfect.
So, we can start that dialogue on how we want to approach that.
Mr. Chair. Rob, Robin, go ahead. You go.
I was just going to say, I think we should add this to our spreadsheet and kind of go over and stuff.
Mr. Chair, I agree, and I'm glad that we are going to finally take that up. But I would note that this is a charity event. This is not a, it's not a league, or it's not, we still have to have the bigger discussion, but I think it is important to note that this is a good charity, and we've been supporting it for years and duly noted about the fees. But this is, this is a little different than the last request that we had.
Yeah, so maybe it's, if it's a charity that we, yeah.
We need to have the discussion, but I just wanted to make sure that was put into the record.
So, there's been a motion. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is consideration to approve the Clyde Brown handbook.
Yep.
Can I just come up? In our packets is an overview of the changes. And also in the packet is the actual handbook. All right. So, do you guys want to, do you guys walk us through the changes and then if we go through all the changes, and then we can ask questions after that.
So, we just wanted to point out the fact that, you know, in September, we're introducing the handbook at this time. We felt that we needed to truly get into the new building before we could understand procedures, how things were going to work, before we could sort it out accurately. So, that's why we're here this evening.
So, I'm Elise Malloy. I'm the assistant principal and school counselor at Clyde F. Brown. Just wanted, you know, Mr. Phelps has already introduced. Thank you so much for having us, and thank you also for allowing us to present this a little bit later. As Mr. Phelps mentioned, we wanted to get into the new building because a lot of the procedures that were in the former handbook are no longer applicable. So, to start, when you look at the overview of changes, Mr. Phelps was kind enough to put this together for us. Looking at section one, page six, Students Entering the Building. This has been rewritten to reflect the new procedures at Clyde F. Brown. Page two, or section two, page seven, Building Security, Visitors to the Building and Parking. This has also been rewritten to reflect the new procedures at CFB. Page seven, Part Two, Section B, Attendance Protocol. We have now also included the section on truancy. It's been revised to reflect the new procedures at CFB and includes truancy. Says truancy is against the law. Truancy is defined as being absent from school without permission of parents or school officials. Offenders and their parents will connect with administration at the school. Students who are absent and a parent, whose parent or guardian has not called the school will be marked truant. Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires students, schools, to track chronic absenteeism. Students are considered chronically absent when they have missed 10 percent of the school days in a session at any given time during the year. Section three, page eight, School Absence Protocol, has been revised to reflect the new state requirements for monitoring chronic absenteeism, and now reads, Letters of Communication are automatically generated from the attendance database and mailed to families of students who have approved chronic absence, as we've included the word chronic in there. Section four, page nine, Out of School Vacations, has been rewritten to be more concise, and now reads, Family Vacation Trips During the School Year Are Not Encouraged. If a disruption to consistent attendance must occur, an email or written note explaining the upcoming trip should be sent to the office at least one week in advance. Students are responsible for all written homework missed and will make up assignments upon return to school. Students will have one day per day out of school to complete missed work, and teachers will not provide assignments in advance. This is also similar to the middle school and high school handbooks.
So, another change on page nine at the top reflects, under snacks, we've changed the wording upon consulting with the school nurse, who has been working with Department of Public Health and other local school nurses and health providers, to change the wording in snack. Once, it used to read peanut, tree nut allergy free. It now reads peanut, tree nut allergen aware. That's consistent, again, with other districts locally, and is approved by the Board of Health. On page 10, we, oh, sorry, under the recess section, we've made a slight change just to include grade five, because they now are members of our building and who enjoy recess. Page, the next section, page 10, we've made a revision to reflect changes in our half-day kindergarten program. It now reads, Half-day Kindergarten Students Now Have the Option to Eat Lunch in the Cafeteria and May Be Dismissed Following Lunch. Another change to that section, well, it's a change in the lunch place. And finally, under the mention of peanut, tree nut, egg free, we've changed the wording, again, to align with other districts and Board of Health recommendations, Department of Public Health, to now read peanut, tree nut, allergen aware table within the cafeteria. On page 11, we've changed our general student dismissal procedures to reflect the new changes that have taken place at Clyde Brown. On page 12, pardon me, the School Staff Communication Guidelines has been rewritten to read now. For further questions, contact the principal and assistant principal. Page 16, we have added an updated, unupdated information that was provided for us by Dr. Marks, within the section on Discipline of Students with Special Needs section. Really, it is basically the same with the inclusion of information that the district was required to include. And on page 19, under the request to change buses section, we've now rewritten that part to read, A regular bus student must bring a note to the teacher each time he or she is to be a walker of a parent pickup.
On section 10, page 23, the preschool program, this actually is an editing error on the, this form and also in the handbook. There is now a five-day morning program, which runs from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. It was removed, it says that it was removed. However, we do offer a five-day morning program, so that does need to be edited in the handbook. The kindergarten handbook has been changed to, we used to have kindergarten handbook, and is now a kindergarten question and answer document, which is now in place of the. On section 11, page 25, we changed the language there, which is wording changes from Makerspace to Steam Lab, and we've taken out maker, tinker, Makerspace. Section 12, page 26, we had a wording change. Project Place Learning PBL blocks are incorporated with them. We took out the Unified Arts Schedule and put it into the general curriculum, and we took out the word facilitated, and is now co-taught by the Unified Arts staff and classroom teachers. On section B, under Academic Intervention Blocks, we had a wording change. It used to have GWIN time. We have taken that out and put in Academic Intervention Blocks in its place. Section 13, page 27, we had a wording change to reflect the hours of extended days wraparound program for kindergarten, half-day kindergarten. We've changed those hours from 12:00 to 2:50 p.m. And then section 14, page 35, under Counseling Services, the changing in the wording has reflected the current curriculum changes. The marked K-5 curriculum is now included in the Open Circle curriculum.
There are no further changes to the handbook. The subsequent changes that follow are reflective of policy from school committee that does not change. So, we've included those that not changed.
Excellent. Thanks. One, hold on a minute. One, thanks. I know we normally do this once a year, but it's a new building, so if procedures and things need to change and we need to adapt them again, just, we've got to do it every couple of months, that's fine. I just assume. Change it, put it in. I don't know that we need to issue hard copies of the handbook, but we can update it online and do that. Two questions that I have. One, in the first, where we talk about the truancy, 10 percent of school days in a session at any given time, does that start at a given time? Or if a kid misses one out of the first 10 days of school, are they, does it trigger the truancy?
It basically starts day one. But the state does allow administrators, the wisdom, to consider options clearly. If a child is ill, you know, has a medically documented illness, if there are extenuating circumstances, it's up to the administrator to figure that and factor that in.
Mr. Chair, I have a question on that section, too. I don't know if you had other. So, is the language on top of page eight, did that come from a model policy? Did that come from guidance from the state?
Yes.
Did they say to use that exact language?
Well, they didn't say to use the exact language, but we replicated, we paraphrased.
So, I'm reacting to the term offender. Now, I know technically, they are offenders, right, under the law, but that's just a, everywhere else, it's students and parents. You can leave it in there if that came from the state, but I reacted to offenders. And then when I was looking for the language, I'm also reacting to that sentence. Offenders and their parents will connect with administration at school. To do what? How will, after what? Like, I don't know what that means. What do you, I know you want to have a meeting with the student offender and their parents, but it just, it's kind of just floating there.
Well, in this case, it's more the family, more the parents than the student.
But when does that occur? How does that occur? Is the administration?
Yeah, it depends on the circumstances. Certainly, if a child is, and we have children in our building who are ill and miss a lot of school, we're in frequent contact with them. We, I think, wanted to have some leeway in defining what that contact looked like.
No, no, I'm not questioning what it is. I'm questioning this statement. So, is this, parents, parents and their offender students are encouraged to connect with administration? It's just, it's a wide-open statement.
Yeah, I think it's too, I think it was kept more broad, so that way, I think it's a, I think it's something that the district needs to probably look at more closely, our attendance protocols and our attendance plans. So, that way, we have, and I think we're starting to do that at the, you know, administration level, to really kind of decide when those, you know, phone calls are made home, meetings are, letters are sent, meetings occur at this point in time. Because of the 10 percent change and shift, it used to be seven days within, I believe it was a six-month period. And now they've gone to a 10 percent versus the seven days. We kind of wanted to leave it a little bit more broad-based at this point in time. I think we're going to need to flesh that out and make it more concise.
I think that would be something to follow back up on, because I, I understand what the underlying concept, it's just not clear the way it's written as of right now, what that, where's the responsibility? Who has the responsibility? What's the process? What's the sequential ordering of offenders and their parents will connect with administration?
Sure. I hear your point.
Mr. Chair, what, might it be better, rather than the way it's sort of putting the onus on the parents and the students, to say, the administration will connect with students and their parents slash guardians? Because it really is, we are the ones picking up.
Correct, and that's.
I think that would clarify.
And I, I also like the change in the word of offender.
You can use it if you want.
I think that that language came from, it's.
Just add juvenile offenders right before. I know technically, they are.
Right.
But we don't, if they're not telling us we need that in our handbook, let's not put that in our handbook.
I think they probably changed that.
And just to clarify, last year, prior to Ms. Malloy joining the, the meetings we have every other week as the administrative team, we did have a couple of meetings around the changes in the law and establishing district-wide protocols around this, and ways to get Power School to do automatic flags for us, et cetera. So, I do think the intent is that we will be contacting the parents.
I think that would help. That would help.
You're right, it's not clear. It should be.
So, so, can I rephrase and make sure that I have it correctly?
Yeah.
So, the administration at the school will connect with this, with students and their parents slash guardian.
That, that, that sounds good. That's all I had, Mark.
The only other question I had was, just in the changing of, from allergy free to allergy aware, is that based on kind of protecting against incident, like, unknown? To say it's allergy free pretty much is guaranteeing that nothing's there. We're saying aware, we're saying, we're doing our best, but nobody's perfect, and if something comes in that people didn't know about, you can't come back and say, we said it was free.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. The, the thinking is, in a public building, it's very, very difficult to say that a building is allergy-free because of lots of different circumstances. But I, you know, our school is allergy-aware, to the extent of, you know, in lots of different circumstances.
Yep.
Particularly during the school day.
No, I think that's good. All right. Anybody else have any questions? Changes, handbook at all?
It's listening, Steve is the chair.
Well, this is last year's book, right? Or is this, no, you have to update.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cala.
I make in, I, I'm making, sorry. It's the offender talk. I make a motion to approve the revisions to the handbook as presented and discussed.
And amended?
Yeah, and the discussed, amended, right. Discussed, presented, discussed, and amended.
Second?
Been moved in seconded. Any further discussion?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, Jason.
All right. Move to Time and Learning, Social Studies Curriculum Update.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Wow.
Thank you. It's finally nice to see you. I know we had some cancellations here with presenting this. You should have received for the September 8th, 9th meeting, a memo.
Yep.
That basically outlines some of the changes, and we thought we'd like to come tonight and just talk about a few of those to kind of keep you updated on what was going on. So, in 2018, the Massachusetts Department of Education finally updated their curriculum frameworks in social studies, and they had a, some emphasis on shifting some things around, but also wanted to make sure to increase the amount of civics education students were getting in all grade levels, but in particular, including a new eighth-grade civics course. Now, in the past, the social studies department here in Millis, we felt that students were getting civics. It was just that they were getting civics within the context of their courses throughout the year. But the state looked at it really trying to figure out how to devote a whole year into looking at civics, per se. Not to say that we're not going to, the teachers aren't still going to connect civics in their topics, but the fact is that we will be shifting to a new civics course in, for the eighth grade. In addition, they also include standards that had to do with diversity, reflecting upon that diversity in world cultures. And I think often, Millis students are so fortunate in our Spanish immersion program, and Spanish for All in our district allows everybody here to have a different insight into some Spanish-speaking countries, some Spanish-speaking cultures, that I think have been a bonus for the students here in Millis. So, we've had some, that's still not enough. So, we'll be looking at how to look at increasing that diversity and reflecting upon that. Also, need to be focusing in on contributions of women and men of all backgrounds, and so the teachers have been working on that. We've also been looking at more opportunities for students to have other primary sources within their repertoire of items in which they're studying. And teachers have been doing a great amount of work with looking at, getting away from a traditional textbook, where you're just constantly looking at one perspective, but to offer students the opportunities to do that through real-world situations, whether it be photo. do that through real-world situations, whether it be photographs, or maps, or, as I've said, primary sources. And also, looking at the new standards and how they reflect literacy, what is reading within the context of social studies. There's a lot of great literature that she's already left, but we just have to look around here to some of the books that she showcases and how important they are to our history as well as our current main events that are happening now. So for teachers to be able to pull some of that quality literature into their instruction has been great. And finally, one of the last things has to do with new standards for financial literacy as well as news and media literacy. We have five or six people next week going to a workshop that's being offered through the Education Collaborative after-school, and it is to help teachers become educated on working with literacy, literacy in new media, and to figure out, you know, how do we begin to teach children how to pick and choose what's hearsay, what's opinion versus what is fact? And I think we've all, we can all appreciate that, given sometimes the challenges that we all face in trying to figure out sources and who's saying things when they're saying things. So I think those are all pretty important increases, and honestly, the two teachers are going to speak in a moment, but when we were meeting, to everyone's credit, they all believed that these changes were all great, positive, and it was a matter of us looking at them to figure out what we could do different. So with that, also is that every school in Massachusetts needs to have a civics project, and Michelle Leahy is working on the civics project for this year, and she will be doing something in the fall, as well as some of our high school teachers as well. So with that, I'm going to let Kelly Rao, I should have introduced first. Kelly Rao is our sixth-grade social studies teacher at the middle school. Mary Ann Zemberg is high school history teacher, and the others did want to be here, it was just really hard for everybody to free themselves up to be here. So we do have a middle school representative. So Kelly's going to talk a little bit about the changes that are going to be in sixth, seventh, and eighth, sixth and seventh grade. Mary Ann's going to talk about eighth.
So what the new frameworks suggest, and the seventh-grade teacher and I love, is a world history, ancient civilization, and world geography, one and two. So we'll start in sixth grade, I'll, the sixth grade, we'll cover Africa, the Middle East, Central America, and the Caribbean, South America, and then I'm also going to do a unit on the five major world religions. And then in seventh grade, it will be Asia, Europe, Australia, and then by the end of the year, a heavy focus on the beginnings of democracy in ancient Greece and Rome to roll into the eighth-grade civics. And with that.
So Michelle Leahy is a grade eight teacher, and basically, her course will focus on the foundations of U.S. democracy. And this is a whole new change for Michelle, who previously taught, you know, basically the Middle Ages up to each exploration. So she's done a lot of work, and her topics really, you know, start with the foundations of the U.S. political system, and then go into the development, the institutions, you know, the government, as well as the rights and responsibilities of citizens, the Constitution, the amendments, even Supreme Court cases, which can be a little tough for eighth graders. But, and then the state and the local government, how they play a role, and ultimately, in the end, to kind of tie into what Joan was saying earlier, the news and media literacy. And they also will do a civic, you know, engagement project. So with that, a lot of that was actually taken from my curriculum, U.S. One, which kind of kills me because I personally, it's like what I really love, but I love it all. So starting with U.S. One, U.S. One and U.S. Two, they basically, they changed timeframes. So there's no longer a date attached to them. We used to be American history for ninth graders, 1763 to 1865. Now it's just U.S. History One, and U.S. Two used to be 1865 to the present, and Dave Down would probably get up until the fall of Saigon if he were lucky, and maybe a little bit of a Carter administration. So we've had to shift our curriculum around, and it's tough because you have to pick and choose what you can remove. The standards are much broader, so instead of actually the old frameworks, you would have to make sure you touch upon various things, say, that lead up to the Civil War. They basically say, you know, discuss the causes and effects of the Civil War. So it makes it a little more challenging, but I guess a little more flexibility to really focus on what we deem as the most essential and important parts of the standards. So with that, for U.S. One, basically, instead of getting them up to after Civil War reconstruction, I've got to get them up to the Gilded Age, which is right around the turn of the century. So in addition to what I've been doing, I need to cover the rise of big cities, the Second Industrial Revolution, the, like, within the Gilded Age, the robber barons, captains of industry, and then as well as the wars in the West, the Native Americans, and, I mean, that's enough. So then, that way, Dave, when the kids go to him for sophomores, he will start them with the Progressive Era, but he probably will start with imperialism. We've, I've taught U.S. Two as well, and it's kind of easier to start off, like, with imperialism, go into progressivism, and then he'll do World War One, Two, hopefully get up to the election of 2016. So that's what the, that's what the mass frameworks, you know, are expecting us. So Dave will roll that out next year, because I need to first get my kids up to the Gilded Age so that he can, you know, start in the fall of 2020, start right off with progressivism, get them up as far as possible. And obviously, both of us will do our best, you know, will intentionally incorporate civics in any way we can. It's going to be hard for me, especially when I do the Constitutional Convention, and not want to get really into the heart of, you know, the branches of government, but yeah, that's really, that's what I have for our layout.
So we met last year for several days, all of the middle school, social studies teachers as well as the high school, and you need to take that conversation and multiply times five people in the same room, and they are all passionate about what they teach, and those are the kind of conversations we're having, they're having, and I'm just in awe of all of them as they're talking about, you know, the shift between who's doing the Gilded Age and who's doing, you know, whatever. And so it has just been an awe of looking at them. So that we did a whole wall of curriculum focus and where, who is doing what, where, and our biggest focus, as Mary Ann said, is that we need to make sure when we're making a shift, that we're not leaving a grade level of students out. So there has to be a plan, but then there has to be a transition period, so as you roll out, you've made sure that you're not missing a chunk of students. And that's the piece that we're working on right now, is the, Michelle is starting to, I think the last page would have been a timeline in your, in your memo, and it talked a little bit about the things that were happening without getting into too much detail of all of those pieces. But she is working on some phases of this with the eighth-grade students she currently has, because some of their topics will be needed down the road, and so she is going to be making the shift this year for planning for eighth grade next year to start with the civics course come September, because they will have had the seventh-grade piece as well. So we're looking at those transitions. And I will tell you, it's not going to be, there's still going to be some patchwork that's going to be done to make sure that topics are covered, to make sure that everybody gets those key points that we need to look at.
Thank you, guys. When, I didn't see it in the, I was just trying to scan through. So when does the state expect us to have this implemented?
Actually, the state, there's several phases to this. There's a, there's the phase for the civics project, so that's got a different deadline. There's the Congress, not the Congress, the State House, they passed a bill, so there's another piece for what the civics part has to be. So basically, is they've given us a window. So we're looking at 2021 for having all of these things in place.
Well, I was just thinking, too, just in terms of how you're talking about the transition, like, which groups of kid, like, which groups of kids do you, do you have to worry, you know, and which groups, you know, okay, they kind of didn't, we don't have to kind of backtrack for that.
Yeah, so we feel that what the students that are in the sixth and seventh grade, as they roll up, that we will be there with them to get the civics class where they need to be, and then they'll get the rest of it in the high school, which has already started. Which has already started. We've started it this year.
Do you have any idea what the civic projects will look like? Not the class, but the projects? Are these teacher-guided projects? Is it the whole class, a whole grade, or is it individual students?
Yes.
All of those?
All of those. The state really hasn't come out and said specifically what you have to do. What they have said is that it, how you do it, whether it's an individual project, a class project, or a grade-level project.
So all three options.
So all three of those could work.
That doesn't help necessarily.
Well, we're looking at it from a grade-level perspective to say, let's see what we can do with one. One of the things that you're supposed to do is that it's about civic engagement. So they want you to identify an area that needs improvement civically, you know, within your town, maybe it's, maybe you've identified a problem as homelessness. If you're in the city, that might be an area that you're noticing. What can you, as a school, a class, an individual, do to address that? Develop something where you can work, maybe you go and you volunteer at a shelter, or maybe you come up with care packages that if you're going to, you can drop them off in an area where you know homeless people gather. So what they're trying to do is be safe, make sure that you're not getting yourself or your students into situations, but also to be able to identify a problem, but then have some action to address that problem.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's a really good, it's a good life lesson.
It needs to be student-led. So it's not just about the teachers picking out what the project is. It needs to be about them engaging.
Excellent.
Mr. Chair, the middle school has chosen the hashtag "Make a Difference," so they're all working already on lots of civic projects, and we also have been talking about whether our senior projects actually, because we encourage, we don't necessarily require, but we encourage a community give-back or some kind of, it doesn't have to be a local community, it can be the global community, but a give-back to that, that the senior projects that our students currently do probably qualify as the high school one, and we can just say, now it has to have a give-back.
Mr. Chair, are the civic projects now in lieu of the medieval castle projects? Are they, are those going away?
Yes.
Yeah. Those were done in eighth grade?
Those were Michelle's, yes.
Yes.
I saved Haley's.
We have ours, too.
I know, I could have used it for Megan.
It is always hard when it's sort of that right of the ask.
It's fun, yeah, it's fun for the kids, but I'm sure they'll enjoy the civics project also.
Exactly. And there is, just to put it on your radar, part of this also is there's some rumblings that they finally may have an MCAS test for social studies.
There was something in the Globe today.
That being said, the last I had, I actually was doing my civic duty, and I have jury duty today, so I haven't done anything today to read anything, what was going on from the Department of Ed, but they were talking about it being a junior test, a test for the juniors, so.
And document-based.
Document-based.
Mr. Chair, also, the current commissioner is engaging educators across the state to look at more performance-based assessments, like a document-based, New York has the BBQs, document-based questions, so that it's not the multiple-choice that we lived through when I was Director of Curriculum, which were awful. When, you know, what is a drakva was, that was one of the questions that I remember. There was no, it was a test in the old days, that didn't, didn't bring any concepts together.
And that has been the challenge with social studies. Social studies in history, it's not math, where there's a linear progression and you need certain skills before you can move on. So part of the issue with social studies has always been around coming to consensus on what the standards would be, and then how do you assess those standards? Do you assess those standards, and how do you move forward? So I think this has the ability to get our kids civically engaged, our schools civically engaged, and for us to be able to look at all of those pieces. And I know our teachers are, they're engaged with this, they're excited about the changes and pleased, although they're all working very hard to get it all sort of done.
Actually, I think if they're listed under correspondence, actually, so no report.
Okay. So under the chairman's, I'll just give an update. So the Capital Planning Committee, we had a tri-board meeting last night, unfortunately we had some miscommunication on, like Carrie, Robyn, Nancy and I were there. So the Capital Planning Committee, they walked through, Carrie can tell us, but they did, Carrie was on it, they did an awesome job actually putting this plan together and the weighting scale that is on there and rationalizing it, and it was, it was interesting, because at one point, there was somebody who was starting to make the argument for wanting something that sat in the medium, and they were arguing or questioning why it wasn't up, and the members of the Capital Planning Committee did a good job, kind of basically saying, "This is our rating, and this is where it fell, and, you know, basically, this is, you know, everything's important, but this is how it shaped out, and here's the criteria we used," and they did a good job kind of saying, "You can agree or disagree with our ratings, but these are the ratings." So they, so that was presented, of our articles or comments, the study for the high school and the boilers went up to the highest category or within the top five or six.
Correct.
So they are, the Capital Planning Committee is going, is not sending an article, they're sending a list of how they prioritized it and what they think reaches any type of realm of where, so their list had like $900,000 worth of stuff, and it was probably like 20 things on it, maybe. Free cash isn't going to be anywhere near that, so it's going to be up to the Selectmen and the Finance Committee to work to figure out what funding sources. So the Capital Planning Committee also did an identified funding source, so there may be things on there that can be, that would be funded out of the sewer water, sewer storm, stormwater management, so that, you know, you had a list of 20, maybe we're down into the top 10, 12, depending on where the funding sources are. Free cash isn't certified, although there was a comment made that it'd be about an average year, so probably $500,000 or so. We did note that they have to, before they apply anything to the Capital Planning articles in November, they have to back out all the must-funds for the spring. You know, we have our three, the town has the town audit, there's others that the town has that they need to account for before they determine and then decide how much free cash they want to hold for the spring. So we'll see on the funding source, but if we can get out the capital plan that was presented, they actually did a good little four or five slide presentation.
Is there a presentation that's available?
There is.
Okay, could you say, okay. I apologize for not being there. So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We're, so we have, there's $900,000 presented, right? Clearly, we don't have 900, we, the town, does not have 900,000. Where does our study and boiler rest on that list?
So the way it shook out with the ratings, there was a really clear line of scored differentials, so there was a really clear high, medium, and low. There's about four items on the high, and we were two of the four, the other two being Scott Air Packs for the fire department and a new police cruiser for the police department. And then there was the two high-priority school items, which is the boiler and the which is the boiler in the study, the boiler repairs in the study.
So we're in the top four, those two?
Correct.
And how much did the total of those top four, do you remember?
So I believe the Scott Air Packs were, I mean, I can look it up.
So we, so ours is 100 and then 125. So we're 125.
Police cruiser was 40. Scott Air Packs, I think, was 15 or 30. I can't remember off the top of my.
So 125, 40. So less than 200,000.
I think it's realistic to say that.
When you put, when you put the study in, we're probably over 200,000.
Yeah.
Oh, was the study 100 grand?
100, yeah.
100, the boiler was 25. That's 125, 40.
And then it's either 15 or 30 around. I think it may be 15.
So just at 200, over 200, just a little over 200. So there's a good chance that all four of those will be funded?
Yeah, I mean.
It's the recommendation of the Capital Planning Committee for the, for those. Yeah, those clearly were the high priorities.
So presented a list of 20, but said, these four are our highest priorities.
Correct.
And you said there was a clear line.
There was a clear line.
All right.
Yep.
We'll see how, yeah. And, you know, the other thing, what they did in the spring is they had a group that were funded by a bond that they took out that was within the existing debt limit. So that's the other factor to this where it doesn't necessarily all have to tie to free cash. If they decide to roll something into an existing debt limit, they can, so.
So last fall, we did not take the must-funds off, right? I don't believe we took the must-funds off from free cash. I think they, we looked at free cash.
No, last fall.
Then they put some, put some aside.
Yeah, which is what they're talking about.
No, but they put some aside separate into replenish, what account?
Stabilization.
Stabilization. I don't recall them saying, we're taking $100,000 for must-funds off the table totally.
No, they wouldn't.
Did they? Maybe they did.
Or they just didn't spend all of the free cash. So what's historically happened is not all, so historically, well, recent history is only absolute emergencies got funded in November. So the vast majority of free cash was held until spring.
Yeah, and then that started to creep away.
But, and so, you know, if, if the pendulum swings to all of our, you know, uncommitted free cash gets spent in November, then the only thing that we're going to be able to fund in the spring is going to be the must-funds. Because they will have spent it all on the capital plan. So it's going to be that determining what that shift is. Because the problem with that is, if you did that, you get into the spring and then there is something else that's an absolute must-fund that's going to have to come out of recurring money, which is, which will mean less money that flows to the operating budgets.
So it makes sense to say, in the fall, we're taking the must-funds off.
You have to. Yeah, you have to.
So maybe they just weren't saying that last year. I don't recall them actually verbalizing it.
Yeah, I don't think they said it last year, but they, it would have been factored in.
Okay.
So that's the capital planning. All right, so the facility fee discussion. So what we had talked about last meeting is just beginning the dialogue on how do we want to approach the facility? We, as we all know, we basically get waiver requests that are pretty consistent year over year. Most of the time, we've just done whatever has been done the year before. There's no necessarily rhyme or reason other than whatever they've gotten before, most groups are happy to take continually. So I guess I just would open the floor to what people's thoughts are on how we should approach. Now, I know our fee structure is adult groups, the facility rate is $50 an hour. For youth groups, it's 26. It is the set rate. And then any of our waivers come up at those rates. We have almost zero adult groups.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask. Is there a way to, like, how much revenue do we generate from this? Or of the groups that consistently rent the facilities, what are we actually charging them? Because it sounds like most, I mean, we mostly see youth groups. We see all sorts of youth groups. Are there any youth groups that we're not giving discounts to? Or is it consistently, you know, most groups come in here and ask for some sort of discount and we, and we honor those discounts or we offer those discounts? So I'm, I guess I'm curious to see, you know, who rents the gym? Are we giving everybody, you know, breaks or discounts from that fee? And what are we actually netting from these facility rentals?
Mr. Chair, I can tell you that we have one men's group that consistently rents the gym on Thursday nights and does not request a waiver.
Basketball?
Yeah, basketball.
Yes.
Also, Mr. Chair, in your packet, you have the detail and the cover sheet for the facility rental account where those fees flow into. So as of last July 1, it's the second page of that packet, we have a balance. So we started last fiscal year with $27,666 in the account. We brought in about 13,000, or, I'm sorry. We paid out about 13,000, brought in about 18,400. And that, the detail on that is on the next three pages where you have revenue and expenses. So at the end of FY19, we have $34,000 in that account, which then at our end of August meeting, no, September meeting, we allocated 30,000 of that for, or authorized the hot water heater to be replaced, which will bring that account down to, if it is 30,000, around 4,000 to start the year in September. And then the fees will once again accrue.
So if I look at the FY19 revenue detail page, the 18,000 that came in, if I just read through Foxborough Eye Care. Okay, so they are, they're the first number there, which is $640. Then they're also $7,607. So they are almost half of our total facility rental.
No, there's also Millis Youth Baseball on that same $7,607. So the Millis Youth Baseball, looks like it is 2,067 up top. So I don't know what exactly happened of that 7,600. So this is, the detail's there, but it's not breaking it out by what each group is paying. Or at least, there's a couple of them that are.
Most of them, they're there. So we've got Foxborough Eye Care, which is the manager, Millis Youth Baseball, Extended Day, Millis Youth Basketball, Teachers Driving Academy, and AAU Millis Pride. I don't believe that the Millis Pride AAU has ever applied for a fee waiver. He does for his camp, but the AAU, they didn't. Last year.
I'm pretty sure we, yeah. I think we waived.
Then if it was last year was the first one. Because before that, he.
Well, we do charge him something. There's one right here. We just charged him $273.
That's for custodial fees, I would assume?
Is that just custodial?
Yeah.
All right, so we've put.
It'd be nice to have like what the fee would be, how much we waived, what we actually don't.
That's right.
So. So, okay, so this, in the facility fee rental, we put the custodial?
I don't, I don't think custodial fees go into this account.
I don't know about that.
Hopefully, we have our accounts payable.
It does have its own account, right? Custodial fees has its own.
Right.
Because it goes to salaries. It goes to the custodial salaries. So they don't accrue in this account.
So, so the answer to that question is we have basically one adult group and a series of student youth groups. So do we, what type of philosophy or approach would people want to discuss? Or would we just be ready to just leave everything?
Can I make a suggestion first before we have this discussion? Can we get a breakdown by group? What the, what the full fees would have been, what they paid? So, and I, the custodians, we could take that off the table because we charge everyone. So let's just look at if we want to do it by hours or what the total cost would have been if they paid 100% and then what they paid. And that'll give us a breakdown on average.
What the discount.
Extended day pays either 100% or 70. I'm assuming they pay 100% because they've never asked for a fee. So just a breakdown. And then, then that may be easier to have that second part of the conversation about, let's see what we've done. And I know this is only one year. It'd be nice to look at two or three years if there's not that many groups so we have an idea what this looks like.
Do you have gym rentals, like the chorus, like the coral people when they come? And it's not, I'm just.
The people in there right now, who are there?
The theater groups.
I feel like it's a lot more than just the gym, even though it's people that haven't come here.
No, but this is, this is facility. This is supposed to be everyone.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
The Millis Theater Group does not pay facility rental fees because we have an agreement with them that predates me. So.
So that, we should note that.
The Millis Theater Group and my Destination Management.
Oh, yeah.
Those two, we have agreements with them, partnership. And it was formalized by the previous superintendent that. So because they're programs that we want to support as a school, we don't charge them facility fees.
So I'm just, I'm going to say this, and I'm not suggesting that we charge anyone, but we, no, no one in this room agreed to those. And I don't know if there's a policy that it's been written. So if it's just an agreement, I'm not suggesting we take it away, but we need to have a conversation. And we need to make a determination as the present committee on whether we want to continue to go down that road. There should be nothing taken for granted when we're having this discussion. And then we can have a comprehensive discussion about what's there.
So if there's any other groups that are using the facilities?
Every group that's using this facility, we should identify. And if there's a cost and if it's being waived, and then we can, then we can look at the whole picture. I don't want to do it, we shouldn't do it piecemeal.
But the philosophy that we want, the approach and the philosophy that we collectively feel should be adopted is separate from what the dollar impact is?
No, but I want, it would be nice to know what's being done for consistency's sake. So, so we, we made an agreement, not we. Years ago, an agreement was made for the theater group. And now we have basketball groups, same population, right, kids? And we're charging them. So I understand what you're saying. But there is a piece, in DI, I mean, there is a piece of, it's good to know what everything is. So then we can, I'm just, maybe I'm approaching it in a different, different way. I'd like to see what the whole environment is and then go.
I guess for, the difference I'm making is then it's being based as much on what the dollar value is versus.
No.
What do we?
Not necessarily dollar value. What, what's the percentage? They're getting, the people in there right now, and I'm not saying they don't deserve it. They're getting 100% free.
No, but I'm saying, but I'm saying it's, it's, if we believe that, put them in categories. Youth groups that are 100% Millis student-populated, and we believe that they should get zero, then that applies to everybody, regardless of who the group is. Regardless of what we've done in the past.
I agree.
Regardless of what, if we say that should be, that category of group gets a 50% discount, then maybe what that means is we have to go back to some groups and say, unless you've got something that's legally binding us to zero, we're bumping you up to 50%. As opposed to kind of knowing, knowing what the dollar impact is and basing, basing a philosophy on the dollars. Adopt the principle and unfortunately, or fortunately, the dollar impact will be what it will be.
I'm less looking at the dollar impact on what, what is the percentage? And I know, I know that's one in the same. But for me, we're, we've done 25% for this group, 50% for this group. So I'm trying to figure out what we're, what we're doing.
Yeah, what the pattern has been.
What's been the pattern? I understand what you're trying to get at is that.
I think it's two different things, right?
These groups are, 25% of these groups are zero, or these groups are 50.
I'm saying.
Mark's saying, don't, like, we just have an overall general philosophy that says, if you meet this criteria, this is what you're paying. And you're looking for the history so we can identify trends. And I think, which is also good too. I think it's good information to have.
Right.
So we can take a look at it. And you're just saying, hey, going forward.
Right.
Nancy, can I, can I just ask one question to you about the DI and theater groups? They're paying custodial fees? DI?
There's two different groups.
Destination, Imagination.
Destination, Imagination. Do they pay custodial?
Or the theater group?
I don't think.
Do they place custodial fees when they have their plays on the weekends? Yes, they do.
Right, so fee, custodial fees only apply if we have to hire a custodian for a time that the building is not covered. So I think DI generally utilizes the building when custodians are present.
Got it.
What are the, what are all the things that are rentable spaces?
The cafeteria, the gym, and the auditorium.
And fields. And fields. All the athletic fields, cafeteria, gym, auditorium, classrooms, classrooms. The driving school uses classrooms.
Okay.
Yep.
So really, I don't think, you know, we have, I don't, we haven't had anybody request hallways, but, you know, generally, any room in the school is, is rentable and listed on our facility fee.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
To help me inform what type of philosophy I would want to adopt, I'd like to understand what the financial impact is. I'd like to understa, I mean, if we go to 25%, what's the financial impact? If we go to 50, what's the financial impact of that? So I'm all for having the, having a philosophy of student groups are X and someone else is Y and someone else is Z. But I'd like to understand what that does to the numbers. Like what we have done in the past and what might shake out as something fair from that. Whether it's zero or whether it's somewhere between zero and 100. So.
In your packet, we gave you an example of Metro West for last fiscal year. And generally, up until this last, though, the waivers had been 50%. We had not had 75% prior. It was always just 50% in the past since I've been here.
Well, we've had some zeros too. We've waived fees.
Yes, some zero or 50.
I'm just thinking, I just think that we should be consistent. Whatever we decide to do is, I, I just think it's, it gets to be not fair to some, you know, some people might not know they can come in and request a waiver. And then, you know, depending on what they say or ask for, you know, why are we giving some people 100% and some people 50? I mean, it's both the same populations. I, I agree, we need to look at the financial impact and come up with a decision, whether it's, you know, a different dollar rate or whatever it is. But I just want us to be consistent and find a way to make that determination. If it's an adult group, it's this. If it's kids and if it's a youth group, a Millis population, it's this. If it's, just so we're fair and consistent across the board.
I agree. And I think we should identify every group using now.
Absolutely.
Every single.
Ever in the last two years.
Or even if they're not paying, if we give them access, access.
If you use the facility, not even paid.
Because that's the other thing we could do is we could change the rate so that we're not giving away.
Absolutely.
You know, to have a, you know, it's the same thing like in healthcare. Doctors will charge whatever. The insurance company's going to pay. They have a contract that the insurance company has, is a dollar for a procedure. They're going to pay you this regardless. A hospital doctor can charge you 100, and the next day they can charge you 150. It doesn't matter, it's still going to get 60 cents back. We've got fees, stated fees at $26 that we charge not a lot of people for. So why have it be $26 if we're never going to charge it?
Right.
$26. So, alright, so, and I guess, so, right now, I guess the request is for everybody who's rented, or everybody who's utilizing any of the facilities that we would currently charge space for. It might be a, a big leap, but it would be helpful if we knew how much time they used. So if the theater group is, you know, if the theater group's in there five nights a week for three months, you know, at three hours, that's X number of hours that they've.
That shouldn't be impossible, because we have to schedule these, so we have a general idea.
But it's probably a lot of manual. So, high level estimates, maybe? Like, if we look at their recent, a recent thing that says, you know.
The last time they used it.
Right, they estimated, and it's not going to be perfect, but they, they, they rented for X number of hours, whatever.
Don't they have, like, the, the Nutcracker? So I assume, you know, there's a good chunk of time for rehearsals before and.
So define it.
Well, school groups are school-sponsored, for example. The Nutcracker, the drama plays.
Correct, okay.
So they never pay.
Right.
Of course.
And they wouldn't, I wouldn't put them on this.
No, but that group in there tonight is not a school group. That's an adult group.
We have two, well, they always include students.
I know, but it's, but it's not, it's not driven by teachers, run by teachers. And it's not, there may be students there, but it's not a school-centered program.
And again, I think the purpose of having them listed out is so that as we make a differentiation between the groups, we need to know what the population of groups that we're dealing with are, so that we can actively reflect what the fees will be across the individual groups.
Okay. So we'll get that information, then we'll break them out into the groups, and then talk about how, what types of categories we have in.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I could request at least a month to gather the information, because it's end of year report time, and still other things that are very pressing on our accounts payable. And, and Jody is the booking agent.
No commission?
Lots of headaches, but.
That, that's actually fine, because the reality is what our meeting schedule will be is we're not meeting till the 15th and then the 29th anyway. So. So we did it for the 29th.
29th.
29th, yep. Anybody else have anything on that? Elementary School Building Committee update?
Maybe it's time to take it off.
Are we?
We're working through the punch list. There are still some outstanding issues.
Playground's almost done, right?
I guess until the playground is done and the parking lot is done, we probably can leave it on.
Yeah, they're making good progress on the punch list, though. Network was not working well last week at Clydesdale. The Dawn has, Dawn Terrell has been working many, many, many hours on that, trying to resolve that. And as of this week, I believe it's working well. So there's, there's still some settling in. And we had a safety meeting last week. We still have our Thursday regular construction meetings every Thursday morning. And we also met with Chief Barrett and Chief Safia to refine our evacuation and lockdown shelter-in-place procedures for a couple of areas that, that are unusual. And so it's still, there's, there are still things that are, were everybody suggesting to, but it's mostly very, running very well.
The one thing I would add is, we probably should keep it on, because in the coming months, six weeks, eight weeks, traffic patterns might change because of the work that's happening on the old Clydesdale. So they're, they're readying this, they're trying to ready the surface so that they can actually, if we get a little lucky and it stays warmer, that they can put at least a single layer on top of that over there before winter hits. And that'll have some impact on traffic patterns and things like that, so.
Yeah, they're working, they have three, whatever, digger tractors, whatever those big ones are called, instead of one, to make up the lost time, working, working overtime, very.
Three weeks of that, because of some underground stuff, so they're trying to make the time up.
And everybody's just praying that snow doesn't come early this year.
Alright, then we'll go into correspondence.
So in your packets, you have a report from the reuse network, of a detail of what we donated, the reusable furniture totaling almost $70,000 that went directly to Spanish Town, Jamaica, through the IRN nonprofit partners. The.
That's nice.
Second item in your packets is an example of what our teachers are doing during some professional development days, which are, you know, we have passion projects and genius hour projects for kids. This is a very similar idea, where teachers, or teams of teachers develop a passion project, something they propose and want to work on. This year, we're all focused on increasing student engagement and empowerment. And that civic engage, engagement is a focus for K-12. So that's the package for professional development. That can be very personalized to what, what they deem most important. You have the MCAS schedule ranges for this year, and principals will be putting out the schedule. We, we always have a window, and then the principals look at that and try to schedule MCAS accordingly. Preliminary results, you've probably seen, are reported in the newspapers. We're generally very happy with our results, except for a couple of spots, a couple of grade levels. And you'll have in the future a full report from Joan Lynn, and also reincorporated into our school and district improvement plans. There's, Bob Weiss has done a very nice job writing grants for the town of Millis. And this is the Green Communities Grant, that Millis is now considered a green community. This qualified us for grants that he wrote for almost $220,000. And the utilities kick in incentives for another $51,000. This, three of the projects will be at the middle high school, this building. Because of a delay, these, these are things that should have been able to be completed over the summer, but because of the delay at the state level, they could not get the grants awarded in time. So we met about a week ago with the person from the company and the state representative, the liaison, to figure out a way to do this work, the lighting upgrades, LED light, lighting, bathroom faucet upgrades, and some improvements to the building envelope that will occur during the school year. We'll try to use early release days, try to use after-school hours by shifting, if they can, the contractors' hours. Instead of starting early in the morning, they'll start, you know, perhaps at noon, and try to hit, for example, if the library is not being utilized, the principals are developing schedules so that the people can swap out all the lights here in the library during the period that it's not being utilized. So it's taking some cooperation and coordination with the principals, but they seem to be respectful of the fact that while we're in session, there should not be disruptions. But it will save us about $25,000 in annual cost utility savings once completed.
Mr. Chair, can we send this list to the Capital Planning Committee? One of the things the committee's trying to do is track the type of capital upgrades that departments are able to do and find funding themselves. So when we report back to the town, we can showcase the different departments, that they're, they're going out and finding ways to fund projects like this, without having to, you know, look for tax money or that type of thing.
I will do that. And then finally, we have a thank you letter to Peter Bossi. Peter has been a volunteer, and we, in our letter, we extend our sincere appreciation for his dedicated service to the Millis Middle High School Library since September 2004. He has been volunteering with us. Patsy and Mr. Malaney and Kathy Boise in the library estimate that he has volunteered over 1,500 hours of his time. And it obviously is very much appreciated. So we extend our sincere thanks to Mr. Peter Bossi.
That's very nice. That's civic duty right there, huh?
Alright, School Committee announcements, anybody? Alright, we don't have any older new business, and we don't have a formal executive session.
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn, I make a motion to adjourn?
The mood is secretive, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much, and again, our next meeting is October 15th, and then we'll meet on the 29th of October. Thank you all very much.